... for October 21st, 2025 is hereby called to order at 5:03 PM. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Nunez.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Benuelos.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Larson.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Mayor Lash is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, Agenda Item 250810 is their motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, Committee of the Whole Meeting as presented. Motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alderwoman Bade? Can you slide one down? So we're missing two microphones. There's been some budget cuts.
I can share with Ken.
They're sharing over there. Can you guys find a way to share? Okay. Okay, all in favor and none opposed, so the motion carries by voice vote. Next, we'll have the mayor's report. Ask Mr. Martinez if you're ready.
Good evening, Tony Martinez, Chief Communication and Marketing Officer. Good evening. Okay, now it's working. Chief Communication and Marketing Officer. This evening, we're recognizing two groups here. Our first group is congratulations to the Crisis Negotiations Team that was named Negotiations Team of the Year by the Illinois Crisis Negotiators Association from Aurora Police Department. This distinguished honor recognizes their extraordinary teamwork during a long and complex incident on August 26th, 2024. On an extremely hot 94-degree day, our negotiators worked side by side with patrol officers, the Special Response Team, the Aurora Fire Department, and many others to overcome language barriers with extreme heat and intense situation involving a woman in crisis on the roof of a building. Thanks to their persistence, communication, and collaboration with our Special Response Team, the incident was brought to a safe resolution, saving a life and demonstrating the very best of our crisis intervention team at the Aurora Police Department. We're proud of their professionalism, dedication, and unwavering commitment to protecting life in our community, and we congratulate them on this national award. So if you give me a round of applause for Aurora Police Department Crisis Negotiations Team. And if they can come up to the podium to receive their Mayor's Award of Excellence. And maybe one of the spokesmen from the team can introduce the team also. So we can give... We have a designated spokesperson to introduce the team. There we go.
Hey, guys, my name is Jason Cudaback. I'm a sergeant with Aurora Police, myself and Kaylee Young, she's another sergeant. Have the privilege of supervising and leading this team of negotiators. To my left, your guys is right. We got Jason Contreras, Sergeant Matt Huber, Detective Victor Garcia, Sergeant Chris Weaver, Sandra Martinez, David Guevara, Kaylee, as I said, and Bridget Dampson is a full-time social worker with the agency.
Let's give her a round of applause. They're a great team.
All right. Well, first of all, we all watched that incident from social media. It was a long, intense day, and that could have gone a lot worse. So that woman's life in your professional hands, I think, made a difference. And with no further ado, I just want to honorably present the Aurora Police Department's Crisis Negotiations Team for being named the 2025 Negotiations Team of the Year by the Illinois Crisis Negotiators Association, and for working side by side with multiple units to save an Aurora woman from suicide, overcoming language barriers and extreme heat to deliver compassionate care and lifesaving support. Let's give these guys a round of applause.
Yeah, let's get together for a picture. All right, thank you, Aurora Police Department, for one of the finest departments here in the land, right here in the city of Aurora. Thank you. So, it's Halloween. It's time for haunts and spooks throughout the city of Aurora. This next recognition goes to one of our residents here in the city of Aurora for 2509 Biltmore Circle. They have been the talk for Aurora for many years. They've been featured on WGN and countless media outlets, and they draw thousands of residents and non-residents and visitors throughout the holiday season. Jason and Carrie Lever are the architects behind Biltmore Haunts, and we're welcoming them here tonight to honor their commitment and service to the city of Aurora. And let's take a look at a little video to give a little bit more explanation of what they do.
And outside, it's getting bigger and bigger.
It's open to everybody, right? We've literally had people carry baby through, actually. We've had all ages, for sure. Some people get scared and back out. We have a lot of criers.
Yeah, we have the parents who say, "You're going through no matter what."
Yeah.
If you're scared, deal with it.
Yeah.
We have the parents who don't want to go through themselves and may back out, but their kids make it through.
Well, it just keeps growing every year, right? So every year, I try to add either new props or build new props or add something else on or just change it. Every year, the path changes, the way the layout is. Every year, it changes, so even if you were here previously, it's different this year than it was last year or the year before. All the structure, everything you're looking at right now was built by me from scratch.
So we have this dragon. The dragon breathes fire. The wing flaps. It makes noises, and it's like a whole show, so to speak. What my favorite parts of our haunted house are, are where he's custom-built the props. Like, I will go through the haunted house and still have jump scares, even though I know where everything's at.
I like scaring people, freaking people out, scaring them, whatever. Just, you know, watching people freak out is kind of fun. It lets my creative side out.
For me, it's bringing everyone together. We hear so many times the neighborhood coming through and saying, "Thank you for doing this for the neighborhood and for the kid." We don't ask for a lot, we just ask for people to respect our stuff. I'm a people person, and I talk to every single person that comes through the haunted house. Biltmore Haunts, 2509 Biltmore Circle, Aurora, Illinois. We would love to see you come out and visit us during the Halloween weekends. We would love to see you from 6:30 to 9:30 PM. Introduce yourself and say, "Hey, Carrie, love to see you guys and come visit us." Thank you.
All right. So Jason and Carrie, if you could please come up for the recognition. So they are open the next three weekends for Halloween, so maybe we can arrange maybe the mayor's office to go out there, maybe some council members, we can record them, you know, hopefully not crying, but if they did, that'd be pretty cool.
I'll ask Alderman Bug to come down. This is in Ward 9. And the Levers have been a huge part of their neighborhood and community. They also throw an off-the-hook 4th of July party. I didn't attend this year because there may have been fireworks and I was doing other things, but... There was none. Oh, really? All right, awesome.
Thank you for that plug.
And also, it's Jason's birthday, so I want to wish you happy birthday. Congratulations. They really do work hard to bring their community together, and it's great seeing all the neighbors contribute their part, hang out, and there's long lines of people that are coming from all over. They've made the Chicago News Network the last couple of years in a row. I'm sure they'll make it again this year. And their commitment to the community needs to be recognized, so I really appreciate what you guys do in the neighborhood and in the community, and especially this time of year to have such a high-profile project in your front yard and sharing that with the rest of the community. With no further ado, I'll offer one for you and one for Jason, who gets a happy birthday and for your commitment to the city of Aurora, captivating residents and visitors of the famous Biltmore Haunts, a yearly exhibit that promotes accessibility, service, and community. I'm just going to say that kids and adults are going to love it, so you want to get out to 2509 Biltmore Circle, is that right? Okay. Alderman Bug, do you want to say a few words? And I will hand this over to you, sir, and then we'll take a big group photo.
Well, thank you. I just want to come forward. Carrie and the whole crew, they're just a part of the community. That's what they're about. What can attest even more, I mean, this is a fantastic, fantastic haunted house. On the 4th of July, they paint their front lawn. It is a huge flag. You got to see it. They do the aerial shots of it. It goes out across Chicagoland news, so they're just a great part of the community. Each year, they ask for a small donation. They really put everything together themselves. They ask for a small donation for a nonprofit, not for themselves, per se, but, again, giving back to the community. I know in the past, you've helped test a house or someone...
The Judd Foundation, which is a mental health support group for teens and adolescents
Okay.
who are suffering from suicidal ideation primarily.
Excellent. So, again, congratulations to them. Look for them on WGN one morning. I don't know when, is Marcus coming out or...
No, he's not this year.
No?
We're number one on the list for the WGN houses to visit.
Okay, awesome. But Marcus was out last year, and we all woke up at, what, 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning and met him out there, and it was a fantastic time. So, again, congratulations and thank you for everything you do for the community.
Thank you, guys, for your support. Do I want to do you?
You're the spokesperson.
Oh, I am? No, I mean, we try to put on a good show for everybody, and it's just, it's fun. Like, last weekend alone, we had 550 people, just Friday and Saturday night, come through our front yard. It was pretty crazy, and we anticipate that it's just going to get a little bit crazier as the weekends go by through Halloween. And, like I said, Jason is the, you know, the back end to everything, and he builds it from scratch, and that's his business, and he just likes scaring people and making people smile, or making the parents laugh at their kids who are crying hysterically that they may go through the haunted house. But really, we appreciate the support of the community. We have had some of the police officers come through with their body cams on, so if this year the line is big, I will let you guys cut the line so that you're here and just come and see me. So, John, we really appreciate you and appreciate the... Yeah, too. Sorry, I don't mean to forget anybody. And thank you.
You're welcome. Let's get a quick photo. And then set that out of the way.
All right, another round of applause for Jason and Carrie Lever. Make sure to check out 2509 Biltmore Circle. So as residents are also driving around the city of Aurora, there are a lot of great houses that are decorated. We are having a house decorating contest for Halloween, so please check out our social media, our website. You see some nice houses, some great houses and decorations. Make sure to submit those photos online, and we will judge them and give a prize to the winners here throughout the city of Aurora. Really building on the Halloween theme, we're a couple of events that are upcoming. This weekend, Jose Torres always puts on a great Dia de los Muertos event. This year, it's going to be East Aurora High School. I know some of our council members are sponsors of this event, so make sure to make a way out to East Aurora, which is always a great and highly-attended event, you know, for the community for Dia de los Muertos. And then we also have our trick-or-treat here at City Hall, well, not at City Hall, but at Wilder Park, where 20-plus departments will be setting up tents and will be giving out candy from 2:00 to 4:00 on Halloween. So come on over to Wilder Park from 2:00 to 4:00, do some trick-or-treating, and then from 4:00 to 7:00, you can go out to the community for our trick-or-treat hours this next Friday for Halloween. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Real quick, I want to hit on two other things, just to quickly. We're working to get this story into the newspaper as well. Last night, the Aurora Fire Department responded to a woman who was driving to the hospital near birth at about 9:40 PM. She thought she couldn't make it. She decided to call 911. We responded in time. When medics showed up, she had already given birth, her husband had already helped her give birth. The baby was not breathing. They took care of her, snapped the umbilical cord, and brought the baby back to life. It immediately cried, and they were able to drive both the mother and the child to the hospital. So we're looking to get some positive press and want to just recognize the quick response of the fire department on that. And then finally, I just want to take a moment. We had the first budget overview presentation. I heard it was a packed room down here and a lot of participation from the aldermen, but I just think that we need to recognize the incredible level of work of the finance department, Stacy and Krista, and Brian and Caputo and Shannon, for the numerous hours that you guys have put in on the weekends, long hours, staying late at night to dig through. The process isn't over by far. There's a lot of adjustments going on as people are making decisions about their futures with considering for the V-RIF. And then I also want to thank the aldermen for your patience in the process and for listening to us. For the community, we're probably going to take this show on the road once we get a little bit closer to finalizing some of these numbers, so people know what's happening with the budget. And I would say that it's been a very multi-pronged approach that looks at slight revenue increases with the grocery tax to make sure that we didn't have to make any other cuts, and then making some cuts and adjustments. Some of them are one-year, so it looks like we're probably going to have to revisit this next year, but being optimistic about potential revenues coming in from developments throughout the city and new gaming tax from the Hollywood Casino, which is scheduled to open next summer. But we've all had to make some very hard and tough choices, and I know that the aldermen, as well as our office, are receiving a lot of pressure to not go with all the cuts, and we're trying to be very surgical and do this with the least amount of impact on the city and the services that we provide. So also want to just mention all the department heads who have also worked late at night as well and responded to all of our phone calls as we've been making last-minute decisions and changes throughout the process. That being said, that concludes the mayor's report. Next, I'll ask the clerk if we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment.
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Outstanding. Madam Clerk, will you please read the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the Committee of the Whole for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the Committee of the Whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please read the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment?
Our first and only speaker this evening is Rick Lawrence.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Lawrence. You have three minutes beginning now.
First, I want to congratulate the alderman from the last city council that had the courage to vote no on $850,000 in TVs and another $100,000 in change orders on a park, especially since everybody is so concerned about a budget and all of everything else. Couple TVs, $800,000, no issue financed for 30 years. But I wanted, something came up again. John, you know, you and I have had so many conversations about separating activism and positions and, you know, and controlling the message, and this week, you put out an email saying, referring to our police officers and saying that police officers have historically been on the wrong side of history, and it's just a terrible message that you're putting out there. You know, maybe Alderman Larson agrees with you, and maybe Shannon or somebody else on your staff agrees with you, but that's not our police officers. Our police officers are fantastic people, and I had the privilege of working with them all the time when I was an alderman, and they were nothing but professional, and our neighborhoods loved our police officers. They're not on the wrong side of history. Every organization, whether it's your staff or fire or police, you're always going to have one or two people, but you can't generalize and say our police officers are on the wrong side of history. But I'll tell you something, last week, watching that city council meeting for three and a half hours, it was so confusing. And, John, you know, you and I said, "You have to surround yourself with good people and smart people." I'm sorry to say that that corporate counsel doesn't seem to be paying attention, never has the answer. Every answer she gave, people in the audience were laughing at it at one point. Every time you called on the corporate counsel, you could hear the crowd laughing because they knew the answer was going to be ridiculous and have nothing to do with what needed to be said. At one point, I don't know if she's paying attention or watching her phone or whatever, one point takes a bottle of Coke, tilts her head back, drinking the Coke during the meeting. It's just embarrassing. John, you really need to surround yourself with good people, and when she can't give a straight answer to the alderman and your motions and nobody knows how to vote and everything else, that's not good. I mean, you lose all kinds of credibility up there. I mean, it wasn't just one or two times. It was the entire three and a half hours of confusion. I mean, if you were, I even watched over and staff was shaking their head at times.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, here. Three minutes is up. If there are no more speakers, we'll move to the committee reports. I'll begin by asking Chairman Mike Seville to give the BZ and E Committee report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The BZ and E Committee met on October 15th, 2025, and reviewed the following items. The first two are related, and I'll read both of them. 25-0362, an ordinance approving a revised plan description to amend a certain section of Farnsworth International Plan Description of the property located at 998 Corporate Boulevard, Aurora, Illinois.
Consent.
25-0363, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for a mental health facility limited to residential treatment facility, including educational services for children and adolescents who demonstrate mental and health behavioral difficulties on the property located at 998 Corporate Boulevard. This is for Lydia Home Association. They have two other facilities in the Chicagoland area giving similar treatment to children at risk. They are referred to this use by DCFS. This is a, as I mentioned, a conditional use for a building that's currently vacant.
Consent.
They could both go on consent, okay?
With Mayor Lash, any questions or comments on these agenda items?
I think, and second thought, I think I want these on unfinished business. I have some questions I'm asking the police department about and also our corporation council that can't be addressed until that period of time.
Okay, so first, 25-0362 and 0363 will go on unfinished business.
Yes, thank you.
And Alderman Barrero has a question?
No, I just had a comment. I had a chance to visit the property, and it has been used in the past for a similar type of facility, and when you walk through there, it's, you know, set up to be able to operate for this function. They have places for the kids to stay, and they have classroom space, they have recreational space, they have eating facilities, they have recreational facilities. It's self-contained. It's not going to be a disruption. They won't, people won't even know they're there. Minimal impact, and this is a good place for these kids to go and get the help they need to get back into, you know, to a regular living situation, so...
Yeah, they're looking to provide a home for 40 children, and the staff is like three-to-one ratio, so...
Thank you. And the location is in Ward 1, so thank you for participating in discussions on this agenda item. These two will go on unfinished? Hand it back to the chair.
The next three are related, so I'll read all three of them. 25-0776, an ordinance providing for the execution of an annexation agreement with the owners of record providing for ORIC, Office Research and Light Industrial District, with a conditional use zoning for the territory which may be annexed to the city of Aurora located south of Sunrise Road and east of Frieder Lane on vacant land in DuPage County, Aurora, Illinois, 60563. 25-0777, an ordinance annexing a property being vacant land located south of Sunrise Road and east of Frieder Lane to the city of Aurora, Illinois, 60563. And lastly, 25-0778, this is an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development approving the Sheila Brown Trust Property Plan Description and amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Aurora by modifying the zoning map here attached here to, to an underlying zoning of ORI, Office Research and Light Industrial District, for a property located south of Sunrise Road and east of Frieder Lane. This is a concept plan only at this point, and I don't know if staff has anything to add to that or not, other than pretty straightforward.
And these are, these are in need of a hearing, so they will not go on the next city council meeting, but the following council after that, correct?
Correct, yes. It'll be on the November 4th with the public hearing for the annexation agreement.
In your name, sorry.
I'm sorry, Jill Morgan, Senior Planner with the Zoning and Planning.
Thank you.
And I had nothing else to add unless there were questions.
Are there any questions from the council on these three agenda items? on these three agenda items that are all connected?
Consent times three.
They're going to go on unfinished to go through the hearing process and will come back on the 4th, November 4th, city council meeting. Thank you.
Okay. And then the last one, Mayor, is 25-0774, Resolution Approving Final Plan on Laut 19 of Fox Valley Properties Phase 2 Subdivision Located at 3046 East New York Street for Business and Professional Office Use. This is next to the Walgreens, which is at the corner there. It's currently vacant. This is for a 50,000 square foot, I'm sorry, 5,300 square foot medical office building, an urgent care facility. And this can go on consent.
No action. It says no action.
Oh, sorry, this is a resolution. If it's appealed by Wednesday at 5:00. If not, it becomes law, so.
Okay.
And that's the report from BZNE.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, I'll ask the Finance Chairman, Alderman Mesiacos, to give the report from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee met on October 16th, 2025, and reviewed the following items. Item 25-0378, Resolution Authorizing the Director of Purchasing to Enter into Purchase Agreement with 58 Group for the Procurement of a Drive Test Scanner for the Aurora Police Department in a total amount not to exceed $170,000.
Consent.
Are there any questions or comments on this agenda item? There being none, this item will be added to the consent agenda.
Next item, 25-0696, A Resolution to Approve Taveras &amp; Sons Lawn Care and Guardian Asphalt as Contractors for Snow Removal and Ice Control Services in an Amount Not to Exceed $128,000 for the Operation Senior Shovel Program.
Consent.
There's no questions or comments from the council. This item will go on the consent agenda.
Next item, Mayor, 25-0700, A Resolution Authorizing an Agreement with InfoSend to Provide Utility, Invoice, Production, and Distribution Services for the Water Billing Division. This is a requirement to help make sure that the bills get mailed out.
Consent.
Okay, there's no questions or comments on this agenda item. This will also be added to the consent agenda.
Next item, Mayor, 25-0762, Resolution Awarding the Montgomery Road and Cots Road Traffic Signal Installation Project to HH Electrical Company of Franklin Park, Illinois for the Amount of $646,164.08 for the Appropriation of Motor Fuel Tax MFT Funds for the project.
Consent.
If there's no questions or comments on this agenda item, it will be added to the consent agenda.
Next item, 25-0780, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Phase 3 Construction Engineering Agreement with HR Green Inc., an Appropriation of Motor Fuel Tax Funds for Montgomery Road and Cots Road Traffic Signal Installation Project.
Consent.
There's no questions or comments from the council. This item will be added to the consent agenda.
Item 25-0786, A Resolution Approving the Purchase of Bulk Rock Salt in the Amounts of $68.71 per ton from Morton Salt Inc., Chicago, Illinois, and $70.46 from Compass Minerals America Inc., Overland Park, Kansas, for the Division of Street Maintenance under the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Agreement Bid for the 2025-2026 Winter Season.
Consent.
We've had rock salt resolution come before us before recently. This is in order to have an alternate option. So we're not just stuck with one company. We want to replenish our salt for the winter.
Okay, if there's no questions or comments from the council, this item will be added to the consent agenda.
Next item, Near and Dear to the Third Ward, 25-0819, A Resolution to Accept a Grant Award in the Amount of $4 Million from the Illinois Department of Commerce, an Economic Opportunity for the Mastodon Lake Dredging and Shoreline Restoration Project. This is a project that's been, that's been moving along to nowhere up until now. We did have a resolution before COVID for 1.4 million to dredge Mastodon Lake. Didn't happen, even though city council approved that resolution. But here we are, unfortunately, with after COVID. We all know costs went up. And it was 3 million, the estimate after COVID. Now it's about four, a little bit over 4 million. So the Third Ward community is really excited about this one, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions from the council, comments? If there are none, this item will be added to the consent agenda.
Item 25-0...
One second. All the women, babe?
Good question. So $4 million is the grant and the project will cost $5,45,000?
It's Public Works, Jason Bauer.
Good evening. Jason Bauer with the Department of Public Works. Yeah, we're still fine tuning the estimate right now. As the Alderman stated, we've been working on this project since at least 2019, possibly even before that, when we started doing the bathymetric surveys and everything. And we've been refining the estimate as things have gone along. And we've added things to the scope, like the shoreline restoration. Originally, this project was going to be funded solely with stormwater management funds. So the initial, before we got the grant, we were looking at three to however many million coming out of just the city's pot. So with this grant, it's just going to lower the amount that we have to pay. And as we fine tune the estimates, as you know, sometimes things, even with a great estimate, could come in over anyway. So we're going to work with HR Green this fall to fine tune the plan set and get the final quantities all buttoned up and ready to bid. And we'll have a better estimate at that point in time.
And we applied for this grant in 2003, sorry, 2023?
Um, so this is an interesting one. This was a repurposed grant. It had to be spent in this specific region. And the project that we had designated for, that we got the funding for, didn't materialize. So we were able to repurpose it to this project. So it really, being able to do that, really helped out the Stormwater Fund.
And we had applied for 4 million or?
Yes.
We got for, okay.
Correct.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for the council before Jason takes the seat? If there's no further questions?
I just want to say that there were no conversation had between me and Mr. Bauer on this one, not even buying him a cup of coffee. So I'm glad and seated this happened for some committee the other, the last week.
Sometimes a state takes a while to process these through and, anyway.
All right. Item 25...
This item will be added to the consent agenda. We'll let you carry on there.
Item 25-0824, Resolution Authorizing the City to Accept a Grant Award from the Illinois Finance Authority of $200,000 to Support Stretch Code Adoption and Implementation.
Consent.
Do we have a presentation on this?
Yes.
Sure. Get a short presentation. You can take one side and let Mr. Curley sit in the bullpen.
Okay, great. And you can hear me okay? Great. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for having us here. So I'm Allison Lindberg. I'm the Director of Sustainability with the city. And we have John Curley with the Director of Development Services. I'm the one presenting this particular grant award, but that's just because I'm leading the project that it's associated with. The funding for this award actually goes to multiple departments within the city. So essentially, the grant award is $200,000 over about four years, a little bit more. And it's to support the adoption and implementation of stretch codes in the city of Aurora. And so I put this together because I thought you might want to know what a stretch code is, if you don't already. Essentially, a stretch code is an alternative mandatory compliance path that promotes energy efficiency beyond the available code options that we currently have, which is basically the Illinois State Energy Code, also known as the base code. It gives municipalities an extra option, a policy tool, to help reduce utility costs for consumers within the city limits. And then it also helps the city to meet climate or energy goals. And essentially, the reason why it's called a stretch code is because the requirements in this stretch code sometimes become requirements in future base codes. And just as an example, this is what happened in Massachusetts, who has had a stretch code available to them since 2009. And now certain aspects of that original stretch code are now seen in our Model I codes at the national level since 2015. So this is basically a way to get market acceptance and accelerate some of the practices that are currently maybe on the forefront of building. That being said, there's nothing in the stretch code that is weird or out of the ordinary. These are all practices that current builders could do with a little bit of education. I thought you might be curious about what was actually in the Illinois stretch code. So there's a residential stretch code and a commercial stretch code. Both of them have mandatory requirements that are required no matter what. And then the designers and developers, the builders, get to choose which compliance path for the energy efficiency elements. This is very similar to what the base energy code is like. It's just that the efficiency elements are stronger. The mandatory requirements may include things like solar readiness, EV readiness, electric readiness, demand response capable. And on the commercial side, there's also energy storage readiness. Additionally, the state of Illinois requires that the efficiency of the stretch code gets more efficient on a three-year cycle. That's the same cycle that the state of Illinois follows for its energy code updates, eventually getting to net zero readiness by 2032. So for the grant, the grant is, again, $200,000 over four-plus years. It's intended to support the adoption and implementation of the stretch code here in Aurora. It covers staff time from Development Services, MoED slash Sustainability, where I am, and also IT, and then some subcontracted training services. Our expectations are actually to spend the grant down more quickly in the first two to three years. And then, you know, initially, we'll be doing adoption. Looking at adoption, I'll explain that in a little bit. And then the rest of the funding will go towards implementation. So the grant will help accomplish the following. Improving internal, so staff capacity, but also external, so all of the trades that would be adhering to this stretch code. So we would be providing training and education to both staff and external stakeholders. It will also help us to do public engagement, to identify concerns and opportunities about the stretch code adoption and implementation. And then it will also enable us to create solutions for some of those identified potential impacts. So it will help us determine what kind of technical assistance might be needed, specifically what kind of training is needed. We can also see if we can braid some financing resources, align some utility incentives, and then maybe even potentially streamline the permitting process. So here are some of the activities that we anticipate will be covered by this particular grant. So there's the application of the stretch codes, basically incorporating some of that language into our current redevelopment agreements. We want to look into whether we can provide an early adopter incentive to those builders and developers that want to do this before it's actually adopted. As I mentioned, staff and industry training and education, alignment with our planning and permitting services, and then public outreach and education. And then the adoption side, because I know that a big concern from a lot of people is the impacts of cost, is that we're going to be doing some research on the impacts of cost. And then how can we, if there are increased costs, how can we assist with that? We want to look at aligning incentives and potentially providing additional assistance. And then we are, we just opened up applications for a stretch code advisory committee, which will be a stakeholder group of people that will, it's like a technical group. They will look at the elements of the stretch code. You can go on the website right now, look up Stretch Code Aurora. You'll see, you can send the application in. And we really want to hear from the public about this. We also will be having actual public meetings about this once we get some of the technical details out of the way. And then we also will be able to provide resources to you all at council about the adoption of the stretch code. So that's the intention for this, is to make sure you have enough good information to make a decision. And then last but not least, we want to be able to track the impacts, if this gets adopted, of the actual implementation of the stretch code. And I think that's it. John, do you have anything to add?
And just to be clear, we're not adopting stretch codes. All we're doing is voting yes or no if we want to accept a $200,000 grant.
Yes, that is correct. And Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's the intention of the city staff to go forward with looking at this stretch code anyway and trying to move through the adoption process. So whether or not this grant gets accepted, it just means we will have money from the grant or we won't.
Correct. And even before I took office, I know that you guys were already looking at, looking at the stretch codes as they're required by the state of Illinois and we have to adjust our codes. Questions? Alderman Seville?
Yes, thank you, Allison. Appreciate it. So my next question would be, would staff recommend in some time in the future to adopt the stretch codes? And then the next phase would be making them part of the base code?
Yes, I forgot to mention that. Thank you for the question, Alderman Seville. So once the stretch code officially becomes adopted by a municipality, it then becomes the floor. It takes the place of the energy code that the state normally would have. So there's not going to be two energy codes in Aurora. There will just be the one. Regarding staff recommendations, I really want to look through the process and see what we come up with. If, you know, if it's extremely cost prohibitive, maybe we won't recommend it. I anticipate that we will because some preliminary cost studies have been done. But, I mean, I guess this would be up to all the staff, whether we wanted to make a recommendation or not. But hopefully, this committee will be able to make a recommendation or at least will have a summary of the work that we've done within the committee to present to council.
What is your maybe anticipated timeframe to be able to adopt it as a base code?
That's a really good question. I am putting in place probably three to four months for us to do the stakeholder committee, just because it's going to take us some time to pull together some cost numbers. But it could potentially be done before that. Depending on the conversations within the committee, I would recommend that we have at least a six-month ramp up between actual adoption and implementation slash enforcement. But the committee may decide to make that longer. So I think, you know, we'll be getting a lot of feedback from the public on this. But yeah, I would say it's not going to happen really quickly that this would become a requirement as the base code.
Great. And when you say feedback from the public, are they attending the sustainability committee? Or what's the forum that they'll have?
Yeah, so thank you for that question. So we will have this stretch code advisory committee, which again is a technical committee. The meetings will be open to the public, so people can attend them if they like. And then I'd also like to have at least one other public forum, if not more, that we will announce so people know and they can attend. And this does frequently get brought up at the sustainability committee as well. So if people want to attend and discuss it there, we can, we can as well.
Right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And real quick, what are you, what kind of people are you looking to have on the committee? Because I know we talked about this, but to paint a picture for the public and the council, what will the composition, the ideal composition, look like?
Yeah, thanks for that question, Mayor. So ideally, we would have a range of people that have experience in the construction trades and/or affordable housing, you know, a mix of residential, commercial, and multifamily people that are familiar with codes or construction, and specifically energy. Also looking for people that have maybe some fire experience and electrical experience. And, you know, we're looking for engineers. We're looking for architects. We're looking for HVAC. We're looking for energy auditors. There's a whole list on the website that, with the application, that says who we're looking for. But I would consider it to be very technical. But members of the public are also very encouraged to apply.
Alderman Nunez, I think you're next.
Yep, thank you. Could we be proactive and maybe reach out to our local trades unions just in case they don't see any of this?
Absolutely.
And see what best practices they have and?
Yes, I mean, I want more, more involvement than less. So the more people you reach out to, that would be great.
Well, I was asking if your department was going to reach out.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought you said, can I?
I can, but, I mean, I wasn't sure if that was part of your plan already.
Yes, yes. We have a couple, yes. We have a couple, yes, we will be reaching out to, you know, all of the regular organizations. If you do have a list that you think, wow, maybe Allison and the team didn't think of that, let me know. But yes, we, we just posted it this week, so we'll be sending out a social media blast, I believe, on Thursday, but then we will also be doing just, you know, specific outreach to make sure that different groups know that it's available.
Thank you.
And we are having the 548 Group, I don't know if you met with them already, or soon near future, which is a union contractor wing of the green building movement, and they are looking at joining Habitat, Siege of Workforce Development, and 548 Group to offer workforce development and training for Aurora residents. Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes. I told you at the committee meeting that I would get, reach out, and there is definitely concern already in regards to this. A lot of the language that's in here, using mandatory compliance, expectations to the type of adoption, using the word adoption, could lend itself to that there's a clear-cut path to making sure that this happens. And we do become, it's a full-force code requirement by the time this, this committee has reviewed it and whatnot. One thing that I would recommend, first and foremost, because it seems like potentially a committee could be tainted with what the expectations are, joining this group, and you might not get an architect or engineer to participate because of that. And that is to see that all options are on the table, including maybe voluntary participation for this code, stretch code, what's what else said and done. So it's not mandatory, and maybe even some incentives with that, when it's all said and done, potentially if somebody wants to follow a stretch code. Because like I said, at committee, part of the challenge is, very similar, looking at this, when we, when they came out, United States, USGBBC came out with the lead requirements, and it became very expensive. And even though people became, went out and rushed, became lead, accredited, associated, et cetera, it's not very popular anymore. So I think we need caution when we use the types of words for this committee to make sure that people understand that nothing is concrete. So with that said, Mayor, I don't know if this committee wants to put it at consent or not.
Alderman Bug? I see your, or is that Alderwoman Bade? Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the great presentation, Allison. The $200,000 grant will cover all the adoption and implementation? Or will there be additional funds needed?
Great, thank you for that question, Alderwoman Bade. So this question did come up at Finance, and I'll just say, I don't have, I have not done the math on how much it would cost the staff to do this. The question had been, will this cost more? I didn't want to say no, because I don't know if it will cost more. I do not anticipate it costing more than $200,000. And this is $200,000 over four years. So, but I, you know, it will depend on how long we have to spend, you know, debating and, and things like that, but I do not anticipate that it will cost more than $200,000.
And once all the study's done, we have a choice how much we want to incorporate in the city or...
Yes, absolutely. And this is key, and I think this goes to Alder and Mesiacos's point as well, is the funding is intended to help the city of Aurora adopt the stretch code, but the council ultimately has the decision. So even if this committee says, yes, you all should adopt it, you all still have the decision-making authority here. So I think the one thing just to understand is, if you don't adopt it, then the funds that would potentially go to implementation may not come to the city because we are not actually doing the stretch code, so what would it be implementing? So that's just something to consider. Let me know if that doesn't make sense.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Seville?
Yes, and Allison, would you happen to know if there are many communities applying for this grant, or are there many grants available for them? And where are we in the process? Are we ahead of the curve or behind the eight ball with regard to comparison to other communities in the state of Illinois? Just kind of curious.
Yeah, a great question. So Evanston is currently the only municipality that has currently adopted it. Oak Park is on its way, as far as I know, and there are others that are considering this as well. In terms of the grant funding, Aurora was the very first to apply, and we were the first to be awarded. My understanding is that they still have it open for other communities as well, but I do not, I'm not following what other communities have applied.
Good job, thank you very much.
And we should recognize the work of the Grant Committee that pivoted during transition and applied for this. They only had a few-day window, so great job, and I know you weren't on board, but Randall did, Randall did a good job with her team. And I guess it might help to hear from John about, you know, sort of where we're at in currently, as we currently are looking at updating our codes anyway, and how you see this melding into the process a little bit.
Yes, sure. John Curley, Chief Development Services Officer. Currently, we've approached RAP and gotten through RAP for the vast majority of the 24 I Series for adoption. It's a couple more books that we'll be bringing forward to you, they're smaller versions, and they touch some of our housing regulations that we're still working through. We've been telling the public that the balance of the I Series codes would be enforceable no sooner than the first of the year of '26. We've been warning on that for better than a half a year already. That, the process of the adoption of the I Series takes, it's a good year-long process, if not 18 months, so we've been doing this for a while. I think it's also important to note that the state of Illinois is going to be adopting another version of, or the next version of a minimum-based energy code. So that's going to be a step above what we currently are enforcing right now and closer to what's being suggested here in the stretch codes.
And that's mandatory?
Correct.
And so it's coming, these steps are coming in anyway over time, it's just getting there a little bit quicker than some other communities.
Yeah, that's correct. I think the way to look at it might be that if adopted, this would place the city of Aurora potentially at the most three years above, ahead of the curve essentially for the base code.
And that means that our contractors would be prepared and, and at the cutting edge and forefront, and they wouldn't actually have to retrain their staffs as the state, the state moves up incrementally. Any other questions from the council?
All right, Mayor, well, I think we're putting that at consent.
No further questions, we'll add this to the consent agenda.
And the last item, Mayor, is 25-0826, a resolution authorizing Stenard and Associates as the provider for public, oh, for, I'm sorry, as the provider for services of pre-employment psychological assessments through December 31st, 2025. This is for our public safety employees, not our publicly-elected employees.
Are there any questions or comments on this agenda item? Hearing them, this agenda item will be added to the consent agenda.
All right, well, Mayor, that concludes the report for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Mesiacos. Next, I'll ask Chairman Carl Franco to give the PHST committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee met on October 14, 2025, to approve the minutes from the meeting held on August 26, 2025. That meeting was mandatory in that there's a time parameter that you have to prove minutes by, we've had no meetings in between, so we were compelled to meet on that day to prove that. Hence, we did, and that concludes the committee report for the PHST.
All right, so we will add those to the consent agenda? Is that necessary or just approve them? Okay. Thank you, Chairman Franco. Next, I'll ask Chairwoman Wani Garza to give the IT committee report.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on October 13. The first item is 25-0666, a resolution requesting approval to continue with Benteck Benefits Technology of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, as the city a benefits enrollment and administration software, provided for two additional years for an amount not to exceed $127,550.
Consent.
There's no questions or comments on this agenda item? It will be added to the consent agenda?
Next item is 25-0761, a resolution awarding the H&amp;H Electric Company the law by there for the two-year citywide traffic signal in a streetlight maintenance contract.
Consent.
If there's no questions or comments, this item will be added to the consent agenda.
Next one is 25-0770, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to award a managed security services contract to New Harbor Security Inc., Colchester, BT, for a three-years contract with the two additional option years.
Consent.
If there's no comments or questions on this agenda item, it will be added to the consent agenda.
Next item is 25-0796, a resolution requesting approval of one-year renewal agreement with Absolute Software Inc., settled for virtual private network software for an amount not to exceed $102,920.
Consent.
If there's any questions or comments on this agenda item, it'll be added to the consent agenda.
Okay, they conclude the meeting, Mayor?
Thank you, Chairwoman Garza. Next, I'll ask Chairman Ed Bug to give the RAP committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The RAP committee met on October 7th, 2025, reviewed the following items for your consideration: 25-0747, resolution authorizing appointment of Sharon Spears to the Aurora Housing Authority Board.
Consent.
Consent.
If there's no question, this agenda item will be added to the consent agenda?
25-0750, ordinance amending Section 8-131 of the code ordinances pertaining to the video gaming terminal regulations.
Consent.
If there's no comments or questions on this item, it will be added to the consent agenda.
Consent. 25-0757, a resolution approving the appointment of Stacy Peterson to the Aurora Police Pension Board.
Consent.
If there's no further questions on this agenda item, it'll be added to the consent agenda?
25-0759, a resolution approving the appointment of Stacy Peterson to the Aurora Fire Fighters Pension Fund Board.
Consent.
If there's no questions or comments on this item, it'll be added to the consent agenda.
Thank you. 25-0784, resolution authorizing the appointment of Pat Sutton, Louise Deluc, to the Aging and Community Advisory Board.
Consent.
Consent.
If there's no further questions, this item will be added to consent.
25-0785, resolution authorizing the appointment of William Hubbell and Caitlin Kozowski to the City's Advisory Commission for Disabilities.
Consent.
If there's no questions or comments, this item will be added to the consent agenda.
And then the RAP committee met on October 21st, earlier today, and reviewed the following item: 25-0820, resolution authorizing the expenditure of special service area tax funds in a total aggregate amount not to exceed $50,000, and the provision of staff support for the purposes of organizing an independent, not-for-profit organization to render special services within Special Service Area 1. I believe staff is going to discuss it.
I'm guessing that there will be questions on this item, and we'll probably have a short presentation, as I understand there was a lively discussion in RAP.
Good afternoon. Danielle Tovano, the Downtown Economic Development Manager. So I come to you again here after a series of listening sessions with downtown SSA stakeholders and a variety of different communications with downtown businesses and property owners to hear what their goals were for the future of downtown Aurora, and the need for SSA1 funds to reestablish an organization to help manage special services in our downtown. And it became clear that what we need is an organization similar to what Aurora Downtown previously did. This was previously done by Aurora Downtown, an organization that no longer exists, and we've done the work to listen to their voices, to the people that this money, this SSA1 money belongs to, and we're ready to help them move forward with their vision to revitalize the downtown. So we hope that you share our vision and our passion for the downtown's success to allow for funds to be used to organize an independent 501(c)(4) organization to provide these special services within the downtown area. So as you'll see on the first slide, currently, these are the boundaries of the SSA1, and the current SSA1 assessment rate on properties within these specific boundaries is approximately 1%. And these boundaries were established back in 1979, and they expire in the calendar year 2026. So having these conversations now, when we're talking about reestablishing an organization to represent the downtown, to potentially make the recommendation to this organization that we're hoping to form to expand these boundaries, a lot of these conversations that we're having now are appropriate as the SSA1 is expected to or going to expire in calendar year 2026. So as many of you know, Aurora Downtown was the nonprofit organization that was made up of commercial property owners within that SSA1 boundary. It was contracted by the city of Aurora to provide those special services within the district, and it really helped to revitalize our downtown with events like First Fridays, holiday window decorating, and providing resources like business grants and a whole lot more to help support our downtown. There was a series of lawsuits, leadership changes, and a whole lot of things that go, that went on that resulted in the organization being dissolved, started last year into this year, and the Aurora Regional Economic Alliance did take over the responsibilities with First Fridays through the end of this year. So there were many things, when we did our downtown listening sessions in June, that we took away from those listening sessions, and you can see those on the slide, and I gave you all printouts as well, if you can't see it on your little screen. An independent downtown focus, so being a part of an organization, what we heard, the feedback that we heard in those town halls, being a part of the alliance or a chamber that was membership-based or fee-based was not something that these specific property owners and business owners were, were interested in being, in being part of. They didn't want that buy-in feel, they wanted an independent structure. They wanted transparency and equity that was foundational to them, and they wanted to support a hybrid management style, where they had the control, they were calling the shots, and city staff, including myself, provided support for them, especially in these early sessions while we're forming a new 501(c)(4). And then a recommendation that we would make to them early on is expanding these boundaries. And I want to be clear that that's not exactly what we're asking for right now, that's not a priority right at the moment, it's just something that we took away from those listening sessions, as far as River Street, 110 Cross Street, the Roundhouse, as a priority for them to start expanding those boundaries, so it is a recommendation that we would make once the board is formed and they're ready to start rocking. So as far as how we're going to do this, here's some steps that we want to take to get this done. We're coming to you to request the use of these SSA1 funds to cover the initial startup of this organization. So we're talking about legal costs, accounting, and consulting services. We're going to work with their interim leadership council, which we have now eight members of the SSA1 community that have expressed interest in being part of the initial board of directors that are ready to go. City staff will provide support in assisting with the logistics and coordination and oversight of this process, and then we're going to build consensus of the draft bylaws with the SSA1 members. Now, we've already been having conversations with the downtown business community, and we've already had a lot of buy-in from them. We've made sure to communicate with them the feedback that we received from those town halls. We've let them know, here's our understanding of what we've heard from you, we want to make sure that we're getting this right. So we already have people on board with this, they understand what, the feedback that we've received, so they have an understanding of the path moving forward based on the feedback that we've received. And I also want to clarify, our initial request that you saw in your, in your paperwork was for $50,000 or up to $50,000, and then there was a motion to bring it down to $15,000, and I want to kind of clarify why we can, why we shifted that a little bit. So the $50,000 or up to $50,000, we anticipate the formation of this new organization costing between $5,000 and $10,000. So that threshold of $15,000 would more than cover that. So if council felt comfortable bringing it down to $15,000 to cover the initial setup, that would, that would obviously be fine, but that $50,000 threshold would allow us to be able to set up this nonprofit organization with the legal costs and the drafting the bylaws and getting the EIN number, but also start us in the process of onboarding the staff member for this 501(c)(4) to, to get things started so they could start that work as well. So eventually, if this all goes as planned and we start moving forward, we would come back for additional funds to start onboarding. It would just be a matter of if we're requesting that additional money now, or if we're requesting that additional money later. So I just wanted to clarify those different numbers now. So there's a lot of transparency in, in the formation of this new 501(c)(4). We wanted to make sure that there's financial transparency. We would ask for an annual report given to city council every year, they would conduct an annual audit, and we would provide administrative assistance. And I did present this to council last week, but there would be some responsibilities that would fall on my part. I would oversee their budget, help with strategic planning, a lot of their board logistics. I would be their liaison to city departments, so if they need permits, if they need special event guidance, if they need to know what's going on with construction, rather than worrying about, you know, 1,000 different city employees, they have one person that they can go to, to count on, to direct them to the city staff that's appropriate to, to meet their needs, and also helping with board assistance. Then the person that's hired under this 501(c)(4) would handle the day-to-day operations and the majority of the stakeholder communication, the database management to know who is working at this business, who owns this property. at this business, who owns this property, and make sure that they're sharing that information with the city, contracting their vendors to make sure that they have an auditor. A lot of the vendors that they use for First Fridays or their trolley that they're using for their holiday events, executing a lot of their marketing and strategic plans, and then submitting those reports to the City of Aurora. And obviously, there would be some shared responsibilities that we would work on as well as far as financial transparency, reporting to stakeholders, strategic planning, and supporting their board. So the goals overall with this new organization that we're hoping to move forward with was more transparency with their bylaws, making sure that we're rekindling events like First Fridays to support our downtown business community, resolving the issues that a lot of our downtown businesses have, and cutting the red tape to do business within the downtown, downtown beautification, and supporting organizations like ACHA. So I do want to make this clear, that what we're asking for today is support of the use of SSA One funds. I know that there's a lot of stuff going on right now. You guys have a lot of information that is floating your way and a lot of emails that have come to you and information overload, but what we're requesting with this specific request is the use of SSA One funds to support the special services within the downtown business community, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
And I'll take just a real quick minute, just to sort of let the, the council know. When I first came on during transition, I, I met with Dave Debo, who had actually asked for Danielle's position, someone who could, you can certainly step up to the mic and elaborate, but somebody who could start to bring and connect the city a little bit better with what's happening downtown. That had sort of started to slip away, so that's why we put her in that position. One of the things that we had also wanted her to do with a background in promotions and marketing is to start working a little bit better with ACHA, to connect the, the events that happen at the Paramount with some of our restaurants. So far, that hasn't really helped, but that's something that I think long-term we need to do as a, as a city. As every one of you has expressed the importance of maintaining the, the progress that we've made downtown, where we used to have just one person in this SSA position, now we're looking at having two with some overlapping, where Danielle plays more of the role of being the glue and the, the person who's a liaison for the city, so they have somebody to reach out to and, and work with. So that's what the whole package and picture looks like, and then it's just utilizing the SSA One funds to carry out what, what previously was done in that, that role, to make sure that we had the, the two people and that support, and it would allow her to move back to some of the other sort of joint marketing initiatives that we had initially envisioned. So Alderman Franco.
So I have a question, and it was talked about at the RAP meeting. If they're paying one percent tax into this SSA, wouldn't they be the ones determining how they use their money, what they use it for? Why are we the ones to say, it's your money, but we're going to tell you how much we're giving you? You see what I'm saying? Why, if it's their money, how do we get involved with saying yea or nay, I guess?
That, that's exactly what this does, is it creates a board that they have control over, where they elect their members and then have control over how that money gets spent.
But we're talking about fifty thousand versus fifteen thousand. Is that even in our purview? You know, you know what I'm saying? Because if that's their money, I mean, I would like to know, but I mean, you know what I'm saying? Why, why do we get a say on that if they're actually paying the tax?
Well, I, I mean, I think you're asking two separate questions. So, so, you know, from a, maybe a philosophical question is, we're collecting the tax, and so, you know, in that sense, it is their money, and, you know, maybe our say should be less. But from the sense, from the legal sense of it's a tax, and therefore, we have a responsibility as the collector and the holder of the tax to make sure it's spent on public purpose. So it's not, it, it's, it's not a simple, you know, I understand what you're saying is that it's collected from the property owner, owners of the SSA One, but you could say that about any tax, right? That every tax is collected from the property owners and the residents and businesses in Aurora, and we have a responsibility to make sure that money is spent on public purpose. So that's, that is part of the approval process, is to make sure it's spent on public purpose.
Can I just add a little bit to that, which is, we, we also talked about setting this up as an advisory board, where the city maintained control over the, the money, but you may remember, there was a lawsuit from the previous Aurora Downtown where a member was suing the board for a lack of transparency. This came up at the, at the town hall meetings, and, and some of you might be more familiar with that lawsuit. But what I didn't want to do was open up the city to that liability should we face another lawsuit in the future. So to me, having this independent board and having the liaison is the best way to sort of reduce liability and, and also give the, the organization some independence.
Alderman Savel.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'll, I have a couple of questions, and then I'm going to reiterate what I asked at our last meeting. I'm sorry, we haven't been able to connect yet. But the SSA boundary in this map is in blue, is that correct?
Correct.
And so did you take a look at the, this, the block I was referring to where the Carnitas Restaurant is and the Judah Foundation?
So you said Spring and Lincoln, correct?
Spring and Lincoln, which is, like I say, Carnitas Restaurant is on there, as well as the Judah Foundation, huh?
New York.
I'm sorry.
Okay, because I did look at Spring and Lincoln, and there was a Moose Lodge there? There was a Moose Lodge at Spring and Lincoln, which is not currently in the boundaries, but if it's, if it's Spring and New York is what?
New York, right in the corner, New York and Lincoln.
New York and Lincoln.
New York and Lincoln, yeah.
Okay. I'll get back to you on that one then.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, sure.
And then also, why 501(c)(4) and not a 501(c)(3)?
We were structuring this very similar to the way that Aurora Downtown was, was set up, and that's the way that Aurora Downtown was set up. And so I know that the difference between a 501(c)(4) and the difference between, between a 501(c)(3) is the ability, the major difference, the ability to fundraise, and so we just were, we were structuring it similar to it, to the way Aurora Downtown was, and that was the way that Aurora Downtown was.
Because a former director, I think, had a question about that, and she's requesting that we consider that.
I, Alderman, David Debo, Director of Economic Development, but that's, again, precisely why you want to go through this process, because the attorney might speak to their eight representatives and decide a three or four, decide they could raise money this way or whatever. So that's exactly, I mean, it says, says that, but it's going to be up to the attorney working with the board to determine exactly how the format goes, because it's really up to them. Makes sense?
Okay, sure.
And then? So just process-wise, it's to hire an attorney that specializes in that, have them make the recommendation?
Right. Okay, sounds good. And then lastly, what does downtown beautification mean to you with this committee? How will they function with that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Downtown beautification, you mentioned one of your goals. What does that mean in terms of what this committee will be involved in?
So it's also working with Abby and her downtown crew as far as, so we're actually having discussions now about downtown holiday lights and a variety of different things, and so that kind of adds to the beautification of downtown.
So going through, from the budget perspective that I've been buried in, things like holiday lights are split between the SSA One funds and the, the city. Typically, we partner on a lot of these things to help cover the cost of, of decorations and so forth.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, you were going to say something, I was just going to...
There was a budget line item for thirty-six thousand dollars that was a pass-through to Aurora Downtown for holiday lights, and we've been able to take that and, and kind of really look at the way that that money was spent, work with Abby's team to see what, what her team could absorb and what we could still use via contractors. So we're working through those discussions now.
And I believe the lights in the tree, the holiday tree above the Leland Towers, not all of them are working, so you may want to take a look at that.
We, we also have to replace our, our Christmas tree. The roots are all, are all bundled up, and we're, we're going to have to get a new Christmas tree and find a permanent home for that before this, this holiday season.
That's in, that's in the works.
And just also, to give you a little background, the beautification that we have in the, in the downtown is really the result of the Design Review Committee in the Fox Walk District that was approved by city council in nineteen ninety-three. And then I would hope you, the SSA would work closely with them, because you, they have a lot of the same goals, and then we've been able to see that implemented over a period of, well, decades now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Nunez.
Danielle, thank you again for giving me the information last week. I really appreciate that. As a liaison, I can't recall, will you or you not have a seat on the board?
I think that would be something that the board would decide. I would be part of the board meetings, but as far as who has voting rights, that would be something that their bylaws would determine.
Okay. And then regarding cutting through the red tape to do business downtown, can you give some examples or even how you expect or expect to work through that?
So especially if a lot of the development, economic development is going to be coming internally through the city, working with David Debo or even working with our permits department, trying to get things through, trying to get to the right people to get permits done, to get, you know, speak to the right people, I would be able to, not necessarily fast-track things or push things to the front of the line, but make sure that you're getting in front of the right people, make sure that, you know, zoning and planning, this is who you need to speak with. If you need to set up a DST, this is the process to get things done. If you need to get a permit for XYZ, this is the process to get it done, because some people have no idea even where to, where to get started, and sometimes that slows things down.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Of course.
Alderman Larson.
Thank you. I, I guess my question is kind of related to what Alderman Franco asked with the logistics of how, of how the money is going to be spent. So if they are going to be given authorization to, to spend the SSA One money, are we taking, I guess if we keep this at the fifty thousand mark, are we taking that and moving it into an account that this new organization will have access to, or are we giving them authorization to spend that? And then, I guess, in the future, if they're presenting like a yearly budget, are we going to have to periodically approve transfers of funds based on that?
Is, is there somebody from finance that could also add to that? The question's more a technical finance question, I believe. You're saying, if we approve the use of fifty thousand dollars, will it go to a special account? Will we set up a special account, or will it just be something that we leave in the, use out of the city's fund?
And also, like, are we, are they going to have to keep coming back to council for, for purchases that they want to do, or will it be like a periodic?
I'll answer the second one. What, what we had in the past was a regular agreement with Aurora Downtown where we made, I think it was semi-annual payments, and they just were automatic once we approved that agreement. So that's the point of giving the board some control, letting them choose somebody that meets their needs and expectations, goes through the interview process, and then from there, they would probably be drafting a budget that would be presented to the council once again to develop that long-term relationship.
Okay.
And then I'll let Dr. Caputo ask, answer the technical question.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian Caputo, Director of Operations Management. I, I imagine that this will probably work similarly to the way it did in the past. Now, as the mayor's outlined, there could be some, some tweaks, tweaks on that, but all the tax money comes into a fund that the CFO maintains. And as the mayor suggested, there would be a, if it follows the same course as last time, the downtown organization would submit a budget to, an annual budget to the city council, which in some form or fashion, either you acknowledge or approve or something along those lines. As far as how the money worked last time around, is that what we, we could do it one of two ways. We could certainly give the money to them and let them work it through their own bank accounts, but the, the, another way to do it is for them to submit bills to us and have us pay them. It could work either way. And if I remember correctly, the last time, we might have done it the former way, that is submitting bills to us and us paying them. I'd have to go back and, and check to see if that actually played out that way, but there would be oversight from the council in one former fashion.
And then there is no legal entity set up, so we probably wouldn't be writing, initially writing a check.
Not initially, definitely.
We would probably just be paying for it.
That's right.
Once that committee selects the.
With these initial costs, absolutely, Mayor. With these initial costs, there is nowhere to send the money. It would be paid out of, directly by the city, out of that fund.
And what we typically do, and it, it could be a little bit different here, is we typically put something in an escrow account so that we know it's there, and we have an escrow agent looking, and then we could approve it, but I, it's really up to Dr. Caputo to figure out, and Stacy Howard exactly, but generally, when there's any money involved, there's always a middle person that we specifically, and actually, this came from the council, who remembers that a long time ago, they said they always would prefer it going into an escrow. So very often, we do that, subject to what you say here.
Any other questions? Alda Woman Garza.
So in this case, the businesses are empty totally. They don't have no rentals, nothing, still have to be part of the SSA One.
Well, they're, so the property owners pay into the SSA One, they don't, so the business owners would not need to pay any type of membership, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
They, no, there would be no type of membership fee to be part of it. If they're in the boundary, you're considered to be in the SSA One because the property owner within that boundary is, has an assessment.
So the property owner have to pay.
The property owner does pay as part of the tax.
Yeah, because there's so many, right here, we have so many buildings empty. So in that case, the property owner is responsible for that.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Barrera.
Yes, the, the issue I have is that, you know, we got that, we got that memo from the alliance, and, and so I have more, more questions. And I, I understand this, I don't have an issue with this per se, but the bigger, the bigger picture of how the pieces are going to fit together is, is what's on my mind and getting on the same page, because in the past, the City of Aurora's had a great relationship with the Greater Aurora Chamber of Commerce, Aurora Downtown, you know, the, the different entities in the downtown, and I don't see that scenario right now. So that, that's, that's my, my concern, and I was hoping to get more time to be able to, to see that we are moving in that direction. So I'm not, I'm not prepared to support it at this time, because I really want to underscore the need to build that relationship. We need these organizations to make, make a better city, and that's, wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. I'll just respond to that real quickly. As I responded, and I don't know if you've had a chance to read my email or see the attachment, you know, my economic, one of economic development goals is to try and bring it back under the city's control, so the council has oversight of, of everything that happens with any funds that are used previously under Invest Aurora. I attached the Excel shot file that, that showed seven of eleven or so businesses that are now in default on their loans. It's, it's actually, Dave looked it up and confirmed that a hundred percent are now in default on their loans. So I think that the city needs to have some oversight, and then secondly, you know, our, our intentions, as I indicated in my email, was to, and we have had discussions, the, the email caught us by surprise too, but was to have, so this three million dollars that was split was to have a strong, robust Chamber of Commerce, as well as to recoup some of those funds that might be used and directed towards the Aurora Civic Center Authority or our own internal economic development activities. When was that, when was that email sent? Today around noon, I think. Because we, a lot of us have been tied up since one o'clock. Yep. In budget meetings, RAP committee in here. So I apologize for not being able to see that memo. No, no problem. I typed it late last night and could have sent it at seven AM, but I immediately went into talks with Stacy about the budget at seven AM, so. We, I didn't get to send it to you till noon, and I'll take ownership of that, but if, if you have a moment to, first of all, one, we're happy to put it on unfinished, if, if anybody has future questions about where we're going, what our intent is, and, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And we would definitely like to continue to have dialogue with the alliance about what happens there. That, that letter caught us off by surprise as well, and we responded to it, so.
Alderman Mesiacos.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the discussion and allowing us to have this discussion about how we move forward. It's, it's a subject on everybody's mind, I think we can all agree on that. But in order to move forward, I think we also need to know how we, how, where we're at. So if we can get an accounting of where the alliance is today, since it first was organized and they received the three million dollars, I'd love to see where our money was spent, where it was spent, because we also lost a few good people too, after it was created here, that worked for the city in one way or another with some of these sub-organizations, well, some of these organizations that were supposed to become sub-organizations. So if you include that as part of the, of an update, it'd be greatly appreciated.
I would, I would definitely like to see those numbers myself. I believe in part of that email, they referenced that they weren't, weren't subject to FOIA, and I would highlight that that is the problem. So we, we also want to see how that money was spent, but I will, I will certainly ask again and immediately share whatever we can. But I will certainly ask again and immediately share whatever we can.
Alderwoman Smith.
I don't, I think what they've come forward with is great. I said that last week. The old downtown Aurora was done very nicely. There's just been some animosity going on in the city with the chambers and this. And I think to Dan's, Alderman Barrero's point, I would really like to hear, and Alderman Masiacos' point, I'd like to hear from the Alliance. I'd like the Alliance to come and present to us, perhaps next week, if they can, to where they are. And I don't know why we have to hold back this project to hear from the Alliance. I just, and I don't know, I don't know what the tug is between them. I don't understand it, I haven't really gotten the whole thing. But just like a chamber, a chamber can't, the Alliance can't force a chamber to join them if they don't want to join them. So if the downtown chooses to do their own thing, they choose to do their own thing. But I really feel like we, as a city, because we are the city, we need to patch these relationships a little bit. You know, we've just, we all feel like there's just a tug of war going on right now, and we need to do a little bit better in to figuring out how to smooth that over a little bit. So whomever in your administration could possibly get somebody from the Alliance to come and present to us to where they are, with their plan, financially, where they're going, it would really be helpful. I think we all need to know that.
So I think certainly one, just broad picture, you know, through transition, there was a leadership change in the city as well as shortly thereafter, a leadership change in the Alliance, lack of clear vision. What they did do was come up with a TIP plan that was not funded by the $3 million, but was instead funded by the Dunham Foundation. I'm going to withhold my opinions on that, but I'm happy to submit it to the council as something that was presented. I think that, you know, my goals, as I stated, was to have a strong, robust, independent chamber, have a strong support for our downtown specifically as that's a very unique and an important element of our city. And then also to make sure that we, at the end of the days, have some sort of economic development forum. As to why there's been conflict, it's a little bit like a divorce. Whenever there's a pot of money and it goes to splitting it up, sometimes it's not pretty. I didn't bring all this up in the previous meeting because I didn't want to air any dirty laundry. We want to make sure that there's a positive relationship moving forward. But I, you know, the letter clearly indicates that whatever talks we had have derailed. So I guess we'll do our best to reengage and see what we can do to resolve things.
So you don't have a problem with them coming here to...
I'm going to do our best to reengage the leadership of that, the board of that organization.
Okay, all right. I think somehow we all need to know what's going on because we're kind of all shaking our heads here, bobbing our heads. We like what you're presenting to us, and we're feeling very torn in between. And I think we all would like to move forward with this, but we also need to feel good about where the Alliance is. I mean, you know, we kind of bought into that a year ago as well. So that would be really good. You know, sometimes, you know, you're the leader, so you're going to have to, you know, stand up and lead and put a smile on your face even sometimes when you don't want to. So that's, we'll look for you to get that taken care of.
Alderman Bug.
I agree with a lot of what my colleagues have said. We do need to understand that they're two separate things completely. And actually, if they move the threshold number well below $50,000, they don't need the approval of this council to do that. So just understand that. Everyone, and I think myself included, and a number of people have asked for an accounting from the Alliance, understanding that the new administration of the Alliance is not the old administration of the Alliance. It's two very different makeups of their administration, very different. So, of course, they are taking the time to put together the numbers and the accounting and that. Do we need to have that discussion before Aurora Downtown? You know, we move this along and they get the funds, their funds, out of the SSA1? No, that doesn't have to happen. But I understand, we all want to understand and get the information about the status of the Alliance as it sits right now. So regardless of what happens, it sounds like we're already going unfinished next week. I think we need to definitely move this forward for the Aurora Downtown, but at the same time, start to get the answers that we're seeking on the status of the Alliance.
I would say that they are absolutely two separate issues, and I would like to let that negotiation process continue, separate of what we're doing, and I appreciate that recommendation. I think that's the best way to allow us to continue to move forward. So there is an organization there that can carry out these functions throughout 2026. And it would help us with our budgeting and as we could appropriate those SSA funds and allotments eventually. I don't know if there is a member who wants to put it on unfinished or if you want it to go on consent, I'm open either way.
Unfinished.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns on this agenda item? This item will be added to unfinished business. If any members have any additional questions about what we're doing, about the technical points, please let us know before the next city council meeting. Does this conclude the RAP committee report? Chairman Bug? Thank you for your report. And everybody will be excited to know that there is no need for a closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. So moved by Alderwoman Garza, seconded by Alderman Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries by voice vote. This meeting is adjourned at 6:37 PM. Thanks, everybody, for the civility.